Welcome to the former home of Debbie Dini, as I've said before. This was her office where she did many of her great things that she did for the outlook. And we're trying to add these video interviews to the way that we offer the news to you all. Of course, this summary of it comes out in each Tuesday's paper. But also you can sit down and watch the entire video. Most of them range from 20 minutes to 40 minutes. Couple of the state legislators, they're about two hours long. But there's a lot of gradient information. Today we've got Stan Love running for Falmouth City Council, well-known throughout the county. You've served two terms on city council?
Four. Well, I've been on it four times.
Four times, oh, okay, four times. Well, one of the questions, we've started all these off the same way. For somebody who doesn't know you, who is Stan Love?
Okay, I came in Falmouth in 1986. I was, I came in at Peach Grove. I became the Fire Chief of Peach Grove. I helped Harmon Shack and Marvin Records get the ambulance started up there. And I went from there, then my kids graduated from Pennon School. When they got married, they moved out. So I moved to Falmouth for a smaller place. And some of them moved back, so I had to get a bigger place in Falmouth. And I decided to pick up the political part of it. I was on the Housing Board. And I was on, like I said, four terms or four times on the City Council. And now I sit on Planning and Zoning.
Okay, what does the Housing Board do? I have no clue what that does.
Well, they're subject to rules and regulations, the same. And we get our inspections and stuff like that.
Is it a federal Housing Board, a state?
Well, it's both. It's federal and state.
Okay.
And we make sure that the money that Janet has goes in the right direction.
And that's Janet Fields?
Right, Janet Fields. And we're doing the right thing for the people living there.
What kind of, what do you get money to use to do what?
Well, we don't get the money. The money comes from the federal for housing.
Okay.
And if we think that we need to have air conditioning or whatever, we write our wish list.
Yeah.
And we just more or less see that things are done correctly. In other words, things that's being done, it's up to the board to say yes. If we contract grass cutting, if we contract snow removal, it's just not up to Janet. It's up to the board.
How many people sit on the board?
There's approximately six.
Six?
It's, they're appointed by the mayor of the city.
Oh, okay.
And then if, you know, sometimes the mayor will appoint somebody to take his place or her place.
Okay. How many homes? How many, is it an apartment? Is it a house?
All the housing board down there.
But how many homes are?
Oh, my gosh, there's, I guess, 100 or something.
Really? Wow.
Well, you take this down here on Beach Street.
Okay.
That's one part. Then up there by Abbey Woods is another.
Okay.
Ran by, well, you could say HUD or ran by the federal government. And we're coordinated with them.
I didn't, I had no clue.
Matter of fact, we're probably the only ones, one that's left that has a housing project. Newport got rid of theirs. Coveting got rid of theirs. They're winning not so much of the housing as farther into HUD.
Gotcha, gotcha. You also mentioned you're on planning and zoning. Is that a county or a city?
County.
What do you do there?
We decide on how things will be done. Like if, if you're going to add a driveway or whatever. This last thing we done was say the county says, hey, I only, you know, we only want so many yard sales. Then we decide if that's right, proper or not. And then it goes back to the county judge and the magistrates. And they say, well, yeah, well, this, you know, well, this last episode, they wanted to cut down the yard sales in the county. I voted no for the simple fact that I represent the city of Falmouth on the planning and zoning. And I felt if you eliminated in the county down to say five or three or whatever they wanted, then people is going to come to the city.
Okay, to do yard sales.
To do yard sales.
So the city wouldn't be included in the planning?
No, 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 see. And then like when people opens up their restaurants or whatever, they got a building code, they gotta go by. And if it's commercial, we make sure, like Brian Thompson is the person that you go see for permits and things like that for, if it's commercial, what you can do and what you can't do.
And it's, as the name says, it's kind of a plan.
Right.
For the county so that you can kind of make sure everything's.
Yeah, the state and the federal government says you need a five-year plan.
Okay.
On how your county is going to be ran. If you want industrial here and commercial here and mostly farm. What's zone farming, you can't put commercial into it.
And that's one of the issues you all worked on was the wedding barns.
Right.
Where they were taking barns that were zoned agriculture and making a business out of it.
Right.
And so, you know, how did that pass?
Well, what we were more concerned about and worried about was that you had to have so many acres to have a wedding barn. Also, you had to be into agriculture. You had to be farming.
Okay, an active farmer. So you can't just come out and buy a 10-acre farm.
Right.
Don't do anything.
Well, see, that's what we were scared of. That's what wasn't scared of. We was worried that first thing you know, you've got 20 wedded barns, no agriculture.
Gotcha.
And you know that, say, people from Cincinnati or something says, oh, hey, we pick up a five-acre barn and we have wedding barns.
Yeah.
And the way I understand it, the way the wedding barns came into effect was we lost some of our tobacco.
Yes.
And this was a substitute for a person's income.
You know, John Steele was in here, first one I did. And we talked about how that changed the assessment of a lot of farms. Because it used to be tobacco was filling those barns. And now they're basically big empty storage.
Right.
And so that affected the assessment because of what you're talking about is the loss of that tobacco revenue. It's now no longer an act of, it's just a big storage barn.
Right.
Is all it is. But these are people are trying to put it back to, in some cases, back to being a revenue producer.
We, you know, we don't want to change their outlooks on things and that. But, you know, we also, again, we don't want to have a lot of blacktop places and that, you know. And then you got to also look at, who's going to control it? In other words, if you have, say, 300 people in a barn, it collapses or catches on fire, is it the homeowner's insurance? Or do they have to take special fire insurance out or whatever, you know? And that's, you know, that's what we're really concerned about, you know? And again, this is agricultural land.
That's true. Well, let's talk about, you had four terms on city council. What are some kinds of things that you did on city council? Things that maybe you all were involved in improving Falmouth during that time?
What, you know, what a lot of people, citizens have to realize is that you're only one vote on the city council. And unless you're with the majority on things that could be done. But we, we decided to have like this episode they're doing right now with the sewers and water. Okay, Mark Hart was mayor at the time. Todd Ramsey was more or less in charge of this. And what happened was we, we knew the state said, hey, you know, you're going to have to correct some of your things that you're doing with the water and that. It was the Free Water Act that got us really in trouble. We're talking about our, our storage tank at Reservoir Hill. We had the money to take care of that. But then they turned around and put electric meters in. Took money for that to put electric meters in because we had a little time. And they voted to put the electric meter in. It's where the guy can, instead of going up and reading it, he can shoot it.
Gotcha, yeah.
And he got you read. But the biggest part was that the state was going to start fining us if we didn't do something. Well, the company that we got that's doing the same thing that we'd done back then, we did smoke tests, we did cameras up through the thing. And they gave us a woman that would go down there and represent us down in Frankfurt and tell them what we was doing and hold it off. Because we didn't have no money. And we felt that we didn't have enough taxpayers. And that's.
So you all held off on it because you didn't, you didn't feel like you could raise the rates and get the money to pay the loan?
And we, at that time, wasn't talking about $5 million project, you know? I feel that we have to do something. We have to move Falmouth forward. But we can't move it on the backs of the taxpayers.
Well, who's it going to be on the backs of then? Who's going to pay for it?
The trouble is though, we gotta do it gradually.
Gradually, okay.
Now, back then, if we'd have started doing, just like we'd done the garbage tax, we put 10% away. We knew sometime or another that truck was going to go out. And we had the money. Wait, at the time, Gary Askins was on council with us. And we decided to raise the garbage tax plus.
Go garbage rates.
Garbage rate. The Runkie. If he drop a big garbage dumpster down, he had to pay the city. And running on our streets, he had to pay our city. This was all done in coordination to get, you know, things ready, you know? I personally, I think they done the right thing by getting a garbage truck and not contracting the Runkie.
Well, and that's actually one of the questions I had down there. Why do you, why do you fall on that, that you think it should have stayed in the city? Because it depends on which resident I talked to. You talk to one resident and they say, all the residents want to privatize. You talk to a different resident and they say, all the residents want. Which is funny because both sides claim all the residents support them. I don't think that's mathematically possible, that you can have two sides where everybody supports them. But why did you fall on keeping it in the city?
Well, for one reason is it's good for three years. You're going to have to pay $12.50 for three years. Runkie is for-profit organization. So we used $140,000 for something else.
Which, which the other side would say, the water.
Right.
The problem with the water and the sewage.
Okay. We're talking about a $5 million project. $140,000 is like, hey, you know, pocket change.
Yeah.
You know? And after three years, say, we spent $140,000 for the help with the water or whatever. After three years, which I, way I understand it, the county's already got a raise on their garbage.
Well, it's in the contract.
Yeah.
Because I cover fiscal court. And the way the contract reads, it gives the rates for each of the three years. So when they agreed to the contract, they knew that raise was coming later on. Because it says, this is what it will be in the three years.
What I'm saying is that Runkie is for-profit. Okay? After three years, if we don't have, say, okay, three years of this, the next three years is this. If they don't do that, and you don't know how they're, Runkie's got us by the tail. In other words, they get to say, well, hey, we can't do it for that much. You're going to have to be $20. And then three years from now, they're going to say, oh, we can't do it. Well, go get somebody else. Now, some people says that there's other places besides Runkie. Well, that's true, but you don't know what.
They didn't bid.
That's right.
You didn't get a bid this from them.
They don't want it.
Yeah.
So you're, got Runkie.
Yeah.
And Runkie can handle any way they want. Because like I said, they're a for-profit organization.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
And that's, that's why, you know, I thought they'd done the right thing by sticking with our. And again, they said, well, we can eliminate a few of the workers, okay? Well, those workers.
They could have assumed those costs in other departments or eliminated them.
Well, but the only trouble is though, those, they just, they just don't take care of the garbage truck. You know, they, they do other things.
Yeah.
Which, you know, that's why, you know, you need your maintenance men, you know? And they work garbage truck today. Tomorrow, they may be out there doing a hole for sewage or something.
Absolutely. Anything else on your time on city council that you all were a part of, maybe nonutility? Because golly, it seems like when you talk about Falmouth City Council, all you talk about is utilities.
Well.
But there has to be other things.
When we got our road funds, okay, we blacktopped what we could do. But what's, what's bad about blacktopping is that you got, you got to sooner or later, we're going to have to resurface everything. What I think personally, what I think hurt Falmouth was the fact that they done a way with the Renaissance.
What do you mean?
Well, okay, the curbs and the, we had what they call a Renaissance, where the government would give us so much money to fix up your places and that, you know, your downtown and things like that.
So when you say they got rid of it, were you talking about the federal or state government?
Yeah, right.
Oh, okay. I thought you meant the city of Falmouth got rid of something.
No, 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 no. We even had a coordinator, you know, that took care of that. And the government says, hey, we're running out of money. Okay, and we had, just to put that light back up down there where the churches are down Chapel, we thought we was going to have to pay the government to put it back up. Because they paid us, you know, to take it down, you know?
So were you on council when that light went up?
Uh, no.
Oh, okay, okay. Because I was going to ask why it went up.
No, well, I followed the council.
Okay.
Okay, and the, the reason it went up is because they were scared of, not the city, but the churches. After church was over with, you know, they had stop signs, you know, they were.
So it went up for an hour a week?
For, for safety reasons, yeah.
But safety for an hour a week?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I mean, now, now it's, you know, like I said, it's, I understand that some of the people would like to have it down. Also too, they like to have the one down on Main Street. Well, see, that's, that's up to the state. That's, you know, that's strictly up to the state, you know, to have that done.
And the intersection of those two busy roads, it needs to be there for that, I would think. Well, let's go on. As you, we've talked about utilities and I want to ask one more question there before we go on. As you move forward, of course, we know the retaining tank and the water tank is two things that have to be addressed as you, as the state is threatening fines and notices of violations and those kinds of things. So removing that, what other things with utilities, whether it's electric, water, sewage, trash, what would you like to see moving forward these next four years to be addressed? If anything, maybe you just say, hey, these two things and let's take a break on it.
The electric, especially for our businesses, okay? You take like Wyatt, okay? I mean, we're talking about $6,000 a month before the hike.
Yeah.
I'd like to see us take, after they reach a certain amount, okay, their rate would drop three or four cents on a kilowatt, okay? Because I can take my lights and turn them out. I got one refrigerator. I don't know if people realize it or not, but you take the refrigeration just to take care of the milk. They don't make no money on, on milk. They don't make no money on bread. You know, I mean, that's a convenience.
Yeah.
And if we could go ahead and say, okay, when you reach a certain amount, we lower it four or five cents a kilowatt until, you know, that way the businesses won't stay. I mean, the hike that they done, we got people that's moving out. I mean, they, they say, hey, I just can't afford it. We're not no Alexander.
But how do you, how do you balance that though? When the state's telling you you have to do it. And so you know you have to do the rate and the people are saying, we don't want to pay for it, but you know you got to fix it.
Okay, for instance, I, I personally think that the Cleese property out there that we bought, okay, should be put in a real estate thing. We ought to get rid of that. I don't, you know what I mean? If it's not even a developer, if somebody would like to have that land, buy that land, at least we'd be collecting taxes on it.
Okay.
Right now, it's just sitting there. We're cutting it, the grass and everything else. But I mean, when we first purchased, I was on council when we decided to purchase that property. We had a developer somewhere or another.
Real, community, or like a subdivision developer?
Right, right. A real estate developer.
Okay.
Somewhere or another, dropped out.
Gotcha.
And we never had anybody, you know, come in. I heard rumors that, and again, it's, it's just a rumor, but I heard a person that was involved with it tell us that the guy come in and wanted to buy six acres.
How many acres are out there?
Oh, I don't know right now.
Okay.
But anyway, wanted to come out and purchase six acres. The council humped all around, said, well, you got to do this, you got to do that, you know? So he said, the heck with it. Went in, bought guys and dolls and put Cracker Barrel on it.
Oh, okay.
Now, this is, this is what's going around. I got, you know, no proof. I got this from Alonda Henson. She said she was, had it developed, the council wouldn't do it. Things like that. But if we, if we would put that in a real estate's hands, they got more opportunity to get rid of it.
Gotcha.
Than us. But then again, people said, well, we can move the police department out there. We can move the fire department out there. Everything will be out of the water.
Oh, because you're going to lower your flood rates and that kind of thing.
Right, right.
Your flood insurance costs. And so you're being more efficient with the money you had by lowering your expenses as a pot.
That's what some people says. But Brian has really done a lot.
Brian Thompson?
Yeah, Brian Thompson's done a lot to lower our flood insurance by getting so many points for doing this and doing that, you know? And that's another thing the planning is on, he sits on, is if somebody wants wealth. For instance, Jennifer owns a smoking pig. She bought the building next to there in order to put a bed and breakfast. She wanted to put a bed and breakfast at a public restaurant. But you can't do that. In other words, you, if you got a bed and breakfast, the restaurant has to be for the people living there. It can't be open to public. That's just where the law is.
Is that state law, federal?
State law.
State law, okay, okay.
So, you know, which I don't understand it. If you got a hotel, you can make a public restaurant. So I mean, it's just the way the difference it is.
That's interesting.
Right.
Well, actually, that's a good segue because one of the, one of the things I wanted to ask is about businesses. Actually, probably from people who've, subjects that people wanted me to ask about more than anything else, more than drugs, more than utilities, was about bringing businesses to Falmouth specifically. What does city council need to do? You mentioned about the utility rate decrease once they've reached a certain level. What do they need to do?
They need to get, and we had this checked out when I was on council. The electric grid. We, our electric grid will not hold a factory heat.
Gotcha.
And we had KU come in, look at it and, and see what, you know, what could be done. Well, it would cost each household approximately $32 extra a month to get that electric grid up to where, say, for instance, Pepsi-Cola Company or something would come in, you know? And, you know, I, I just don't know what, what we could do to bring. I understand Fields is that biochemical place out there. They got possibly somebody moving in out there. But I think where we made our bad mistake is when that biochemical company was out there, we gave the industrial place out there five years free tax. We should have put in that contract, if you leave within five years, you have to pay us that back taxes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, we got to think ahead because, like I said, we don't have enough taxpayers.
So you're, you're for those type of business incentives that you give some tax-free, but you want, lack of a better term, you want a buyout program. If they leave during that five years, there's a penalty for them to pay for not spending that five years.
Yeah, for not staying there five years.
Okay.
Because we're losing.
Yeah.
And simple as that, you know? But we need, we need, it sounds silly, but we need to go out and pick up more property where there's housing.
So you're talking about annexing?
Annexing.
What property? What, because?
Well, for instance, up North Rhonda.
To what?
Up, up North Rhonda, up around that, you know, that area up there, up there on, you know, past where Wells's trailer court is up there.
Okay, up, up on Reservoir Hill, past that.
Right.
Well, that's not the city of Falmouth?
No.
Where the trailer park is?
North Rhonda's county. No, the trailer park's the city.
Okay, okay.
But North Rhonda.
Gotcha.
And South Rhonda, that's, that's not the city. And there's nice houses up there and that.
So you.
Is that what they used to call Boner Village or something? I don't know. But anyway, I think if we would annex that, we, I mean, here's what I don't understand. They got our city water, but they got no right to vote. But they got no right to vote. In other words.
But they're paying for the water.
Yeah, they're paying for the, they're paying for the water, so that, I mean, they have got no say.
So what's the benefit to them? Cause of course you're saying annexing so the county can, or the city can get more tax revenue from property taxes. But what's the benefit to the residents by being annexed? Because they've already got city water.
Yeah, they already got city water. But the idea is they, you know, they, they, they would be part of, of the city, you know? You know, just, you know, d- different things that they, they would have. And again, they would be more or less underneath our uh, code enforcement.
Gotcha.
Okay, because you know, like I said, people letting their property go and things like that, you know, where if our code enforcer was up there is good, you know? And that, you know, I hear a lot of complaints about, you know, well, code enforcer, stuff like that, but when we started that code enforcer, I was, again, on city council when we started, we had a code enforcement board. Now, I understand that it's, it's just falling apart. In other words, if somebody gave, uh, the code enforcer gave you a ticket, said, hey, you got to do this, you gotta do that. Well, if you didn't think that was correct, you could take it to the code enforcement board. And then they would say, well, yeah, he was in his rights, you know? And if you didn't like their decision, then you could take it to the regular court.
Oh, okay, court.
Okay, yeah, you know, the regular court and, and then they would rule on it.
Yeah.
You know, and, and it's just different thing. And uh, the way I understand it is that they're not, they're not doing it that way. In other words, if you get a ticket, you should be able to see on that ticket what I, I can do to justify that ticket, you know? And that's most of the time, right, you know, with the right. I hear a lot of complaints about these old houses that should be tore down and stuff like that. They got so many liens on them, who are you gonna sue?
Yeah.
See that, you know, until the state comes up with something that says, hey, you know, the first person would lean on is who you sue. And they can, they can in turn sue the other lien owners to help, you know?
And it's expensive to pay a lot of you just. Any, any other business incentives? Any other ideals or thoughts about what the city needs to do to get more businesses?
Well, like I said, you know, if, if we, if we could keep our, you know, our utilities, you know, at a certain amount.
Okay.
I mean.
So your, your, your big thing is controlling the expenses that the businesses are allowed to have?
Right, if the business, in order to get business in here, you know, uh, it's uh, it's, it's gonna be hard to do because we got, we haven't got a road to come in and out.
Yeah.
If they, like I said, if they could make out a four lane out there, we'd be better off.
Gotcha, gotcha. Well, another issue obviously facing the, the city is the drug issue.
Right.
Um, city council has some role. I'm not sure how big of a role beyond support of the police department. What do you see that city council will, needs to do the next four years?
Okay, for instance, they, they know pretty well where a drug house is and where, I mean, you can't tell me that nobody, you know, in the Falmouth. Well, we got an ordinance and we had an ordinance and we still got it on the book. Nuisance, a nuisance ordinance, okay? And it tells exactly what, you know, a nuisance is. If this drug house is a nuisance, in other words, you're going there fifteen times and there's, you know, the neighbors are complaining about this and that, you know? Get rid of it. Just say, hey, you know, you're, you're objecting to our nuisance? If it's, if, if the people are renting, tell the landlord, you know, hey, we think there's drugs in there, we don't, I know, we can't prove in that, but you've got a nuisance there.
Gotcha.
Now either correct it.
What's, what's, what's the consequences in the ord- the nuisance ordinance?
They can, they have to clean it up.
Okay.
Is, is what, or they're fined.
Okay.
On there. Uh, I should have brought, I should have brought the uh, the orders with me, you know? But I didn't.
That's okay.
I, but I mean, uh, and then I also think three strikes and you're out, okay? And I brought this to one of uh, a state representative down in Frankfurt and also uh, a federal officer that I know. And I got a, I got a friend that's down in attorney general's office. I said, why can't we say, okay, we give you an arcane three times? The third time, you have to go to rehab. And attorney generals, my friend says, Stan, the state don't have that kind of money.
Yeah.
So that's.
Cause somebody's gotta pay for them to go to rehab.
Somebody has to pay for them to go to rehab. You know, and also too, we're sp- well, we're paying other places like Grant County, Campbell County at approximately seventy-eight dollars every time we send somebody down there to jail. We, you know, we're paying, paying that. We don't get reimbursed with it or nothing like that, you know? And uh, I thought if we had a jail here, okay? We would be collecting the seventy-eight dollars, you know, a person. I mean, that's, that's the way I feel. But like I said, if we haven't got the money to take care of our taxes or stuff like that, but if we could just uh, make it an incentive, there's a lot of private owned jails and prisons and that, you know?
You know, Will Schroeder sat in, in that chair and he made a point I had never thought of. Cause a lot of people say possession of, of different types of drugs should be a misdemeanor, not a felony. So that people that are caught with that, they don't have that on the record. But he made the point, if it becomes a misdemeanor, then it moves it off the state legal court case and state picking up the cost and the state picking up the cost of that person going to jail to the local government. Because the local government handles misdemeanor cases. Now, it's the local government who has to pick up that seventy-eight dollars to send them to Campbell County to jail. And so if you do that, that might be a good thing in the long run, but you gotta look at those consequences of doing that. And it may just increase the budget of local counties and cities tremendously from having to pick up that cost.
And you know, uh, I'll tell you, uh, what, what aggrav- would, really aggravated me a lot is that uh, our police officers, okay? Aren't trained to do the BA, you know, breathalyzer.
Okay.
They're not trained to do that, really. Uh, now they wasn't, now they, as new as may be, I don't know. But I, if I get in there, I will find out.
But this, the, what you're saying is that was the police officers in the past? The present police officer staff may or may not be.
May or may not, may or may not. But the idea is though, they pull over a person and they think it's a DUI, that police officer is gonna drive them all the way down to Santa叶. Get them a blood test. We're gonna pay for that. Okay? And we got a police officer that's out of the city. Bring him back and say, well, yeah, he's, he's uh, got alcohol, you know? And I, I don't think that's right. I, I think that, you know, we should have them certified and the BA where they can sit there, get it ready for an R, you know, and getting done. Either that or have somebody certified. I think that would, that would save us money.
Uh, kind of one final question I wanted to finish up with is what is the role of city council compared to the role of the mayor? How are they the same? How are they different?
Okay, uh, Kentucky leagues of city gave us a book. It tells you exactly what the council does, the mayor does. And now the mayor has the right to har and far without even, you know, I mean, they don't have the answer to the council.
Okay.
They can har and they don't like your looks, they can fire you.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's the mayor's uh, the council and, and also the mayor and the treasurer does the budget. Council either approves it.
Okay.
Or don't approve it. We're in charge of the money.
You, you approve the budget and you prove expenditures?
Expenditures.
Is it expenditures over a certain amount?
Yes, well, uh, if, if it's, if it's expenditures over, uh, I think it's a thousand or two thousand dollars, you have to bin it out.
Okay.
Okay, they can't just say, well, you know, now if it's fifteen hundred dollars, okay, yeah, we don't have to bin it out, we'll pick this guy.
Gotcha.
You know, stuff like that. And the reason they, they, they did that, and it's a state regulation, is that maybe your brother can do this work or whatever, you know? And you, you, it's, you're, you're not allowed to do that, you know, in that.
So what about running of the departments? Who, who, where does that fall? Were, were city councils?
It's, it's the mayor.
It's the mayor, okay.
The mayor is the one that tells them what to do. You know, I mean, that's why they, you know, they get, it's check with us. They, they come and report to the council. But they don't, uh, the council doesn't say, well, you know, do this or do that.
Does the council have any role in the departments or anything? Just the budgetary approving expenses?
That's it, and then uh, they, if they don't like what the mayor's doing, they can, you know, or the mayor doesn't like thing, they, they can veto it. Now, if we can override that veto or whatever.
Do you know what the votes are for the, if the mayor, so the mayor has veto power?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so do you know, is it six oh for the over? Is it five one? So it has to be unanimous for it to overturn veto?
Override the veto, you know?
When's the last time a mayor has vetoed something here in Falmouth?
Never. And that, you know, like I said, that's, you know, uh, that's why, you know, uh, I don't uh, more or less uh, go along to get along. You know what I mean? If, i- if, if my vote to me is, is sacred, okay? I, and this, this arguing and bickering back and forth, you know? And especially on, on Facebook. You know what I mean? That's, that's ridiculous. My mom always said, don't harm your dirty laundry, you know? And, and, and what surprised me, right or wrong, on the garbage truck, okay? I know we had two people was against it and the rest of them was for it. But what got me was that it seemed like they had their mind made up. Because the next day they had the garbage truck.
Well, I mean, they had the money there.
Yeah, but I mean, they didn't know which way it was gonna go.
But they made the motion to buy the garbage truck after the motion was made for the property.
Same night.
Yeah, but afterwards. Even, it was the next piece of business, um, they approved it.
I, I just don't think, you know, to me, that just didn't look right.
I got you.
And uh, I thought, wow, you know, you, you know, you're supposed to do all your business at the meeting. And I like to see us get back to, you know, it used to be two meetings a month. Okay? Now there's so many special meetings and that's costing us. You know, the lawyers gotta be there and stuff like that. And uh, in order to know if there's gonna be a special meeting, they gotta post it on the door. Instead of saying, well, it's not that ours, let's put it in the newspaper. You know?
Well, and sometimes it's not feasible to put it in the newspaper because they may announce it on Wednesday at noon for a special meeting on Thursday night. Well, the newspaper doesn't come out before the meeting's over.
They also too, they, they could say, well, you know, let's don't have a special meeting till it gets into paper.
That very true. You could do that, very, very true. Well, one, one final question, um, you're elected, you start January first, um, serving your term twenty nineteen, it's a four-year term, correct?
No, two year.
Two year, two-year term. So in twenty twenty-one, December thirty-first would be the end of your term. What kind of things would you want to see have accomplished by this new city council and mayor for the next two years?
Well, I like to say accomplished a better get, get together with, with the, the city itself, the citizens, you know? And uh, being able, like I said, I think the electric, personally, I don't think we belong in electric business, okay? I've suggested many a times that we would uh, uh, get rid of our electric, rent our poles to whoever took the electric, just like we do Time Warner and that. And have the company pay us to read the meter and send the bills out.
Gotcha.
And then let them do the heavy lifting. I like to see that happen, you know? I'd have to look into it further. It might cost us more to do this than it is feasible. I like to see uh, uh, the water, you know, the, the situation that we got. But I, I don't wanna see a five, five-year, uh, five million dollar project right now because we, we don't have no way to put. Now, we got rid of the cleese property, you know, put that in on the sores and that. But when I was, the first year I was on council, we was told by Todd Ramsey that when the new plant was put in, we should have done, raised the sewer rates and that on the plant. But what a lot of people don't understand is the fact that we had a lot more people. When we got the grant for that water plant, I mean, for, for sewer plant, we had a lot of people here. Then the flood came. People didn't come back. So we had that void in that sewer plant to where I know they, they, they was planning on getting, you know, it back up, getting the sores back up to snuff and things like that. But we didn't have the funds and we didn't have the people back to help do that. That's why I had, we had Rumpy pumping sewerage in, Hammer Strength, you Griffin that, you know? That picked up the void.
Yeah.
On there because we, we just didn't have, but we still had to build the plant because uh, we had the money for it, you know?
Okay.
I, you know, like I said, I don't believe we should have ran sewer lines out in the county on twenty-seven, went out and getting a commitment from the homes up on twenty-seven, you know?
And those are kind of ran out there with nobody tagged into them.
Right.
Yeah.
There's the uh, school and uh, dispatch, I think, got on the sewer system.
Okay.
Now, it'd been nice if we'd had Griffin and that ran their pipe.
Yeah.
Of the, we, we'd had, you know, money and things like that, you know? But it just didn't work out that way.
Gotcha. Anything else?
Nope.
Well, thank you for coming in. Thank you for spending a spe- a few minutes.
I just hope that uh, we cleared some of the misfortunes up, you know? And uh, and again, I was, I was against the impeachment.
Gotcha.
I was, you know, cause uh, you know, there wasn't nothing criminal. They said it was all ethi- but I mean, the courts hasn't ruled on it yet, you know? And uh, and I hope, I hope it doesn't turn out to be, we get sued again.
Yeah, well, and, and have followed that. Yeah, well, and, and have followed that case and have had several comments with, or contacts with the lawyers. They're actually waiting on Ms. Hinson's side. Um, the court has asked her to do her reply back in October of two thousand seventeen, um, to some things and that's not occurred yet. So um, it's getting close to a year, but it's, you know, we did that last article a while ago. And um, I've reached out to Stephen Roach, who's the, Ms. Hinson's lawyer, three or four times since then to ask him about the progress. Still the same holding pattern. Um, so ball's kind of in the Hinson court at this point in time with that.
You know, a lot of people thought maybe that was in the uh, courts.
No, courts are still waiting.
Cause uh, I mean, the, the rumor is, and again, it's just a rumor that they were gonna wait till after the elections.
I, I can, I can dispel any rumors and tell you.
Well, that's great.
Tell you what's, uh, when, on August fourteenth, when Ms. Hinson filed, um, I called her lawyer, Stephen Roach, the next day. And um, we talked a little bit at that point in time, um, on where the case stood and, and what was going on and waiting on her, the courts are waiting on a reply for that, from that side. So I, I've, I've, I've tried to cover that story as much as I can and it's not changed since last November. Still in that same spot. So, thank you again for coming in.
Yes.
And uh, thank you all again for watching. We're gonna have a lot of these. You're gonna have a lot of viewing. Um, not all the city council people have uh, replied about a time or have we been able to work out a time? So I can't promise you, we're gonna have all eight candidates. We're trying uh, to get all eight candidates. Speaking of Ms. Hinson, we've, we've reached out a couple more times, still having that family emergency situation. So I'm not quite sure if we're gonna be able to work out that one also. But hopefully we can. Hopefully what we can do is give you whatever information we can. Thank you all for viewing. Make sure to go to falmouthoutlook.com and watch these videos. Don't go to YouTube and watch them. Go to falmouthoutlook.com. That helps us as a Falmouth Outlook, helps us stay and be able to report the news to you that you wanna know about. Thank you very much.